Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council's Post Agenda for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Nick Miller, our Sign Language Interpreter. At the request of Councilmember Erica Strasburger, a discussion on the Pittsburgh Climate Action Plan. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good afternoon and welcome to this afternoon's Post Agenda on the Climate Action Plan. We are so, so overjoyed today to have such a great and illustrious group of speakers to educate the City Council and the public on the Climate Action Plan and the goals that we have as a city to really tackle climate change, to really tackle energy issues, air quality, a number of other issues tied up in that, waste, recycling, everything that is included in the Climate Action Plan. Thought that this would be a really good opportunity now that we have the Climate Action Plan 3.0 and our goals laid out to, for council who often interacts with the public to be able to find out a little bit more about the goals, the benchmarking and the metrics tied up in those goals and how we're actually going to achieve those goals as a city. So as we're talking to our constituents, as we're helping to trumpet this plan, we have the answers at hand. And for those watching at home, you certainly can, you know, will be educated today as well, but we'll also have the opportunity to share this. It'll be available by internet as well afterwards. And hopefully we'll have ongoing conversations about these goals. So without further ado, I want to recognize that my council colleague, Councilwoman Deb Gross is here and we're expecting some other council members to join us throughout the Post Agenda hearing. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Grant Irvin to offer some opening remarks and each speaker will have a few minutes to provide an overview of what they're working on or what they want to make sure that we hear today.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman. It's a great appreciation that City Council gives us this forum and the opportunity to share the work that our team and many other people have been working on towards the, effectively the impacts that have been so front and center lately with regards to the challenges of climate change. Back in 2017 when we began the process of creating the Pittsburgh Climate Action Plan, to be totally forthright, it was a different world that we lived in. We were living with a set of understanding that has been accelerated with regards to the implications of our ever-changing climate. And what we wanted to do with you guys today was share a little bit of our progress and as well as kind of the, some of the team that we've assembled to help deliver on the outlines that are delivered within the Climate Action Plan. So today I have a group of friends and colleagues here that are going to be sharing some of the work that we've been doing with regards to facilities and measurement and impact and energy consumption and energy modeling, transportation and the impacts of our transportation sector, as well as kind of the whole picture, if you will, in terms of the plan itself and some of the progress that we've been able to make in such a short time. If I was to kind of break down the climate action planning process, I'd think of it in three ways, three phases effectively. The first was really to establish the targets and strategy. We worked with a really great network of NGO, local NGOs, utilities, philanthropy and universities. One of the blessings that we have in Pittsburgh is that some of the greatest experts in the world are really our neighbors in terms of understanding the impacts of climate change and whether it's from the technical modeling of greenhouse gas emissions to understanding how a compost facility can make implications or impacts on reducing food waste and emissions. So we were able to assemble that group to help build the plan and the technical strategies around that. But also we were able to build and to leverage national and international networks because of both Pittsburgh's reputation of our past, but also the direction that we have set as the future of Pittsburgh in terms of intersecting the role of not just our economy, but the environment together into being a cleaner and more prosperous city. And because of that plan, we've received a fair amount of both national and global recognition for our ambition and for our thoughtfulness, something that the community should really be commended upon. But it's not just the plan itself, it's the ability to implement what is in that plan that will ultimately be judged upon. Which led us into the second phase. So over the last, you know, 18 months to 24 months, we've been in a process of testing refinement and project applications. So really taking kind of the areas within the Climate Action Plan and putting them to use through things like data modeling and understanding the impact of our city facilities, looking at tools like vehicle electrification and energy procurement, neighborhood planning, grid modeling and district energy systems have been a key part of our work recently. Waste collection and working with our Environmental Services Department to look at better methods of residential waste collection. Farmers markets and carbon sequestration where we've started to look at local consumption patterns and also great aspects like the Hays Woods Project of acquiring land for the purposes of preserving it for our future generations. And also testing and deploying strategies around energy efficiency with our authorities, the Parking Authority and the Urban Redevelopment Authority most notably, where we're reducing our energy consumption on our garages by about 40 to 50% and saving $30,000 to $40,000 a year in some cases in some of our garages. That's led us now into this third phase where we're currently at now, which is really about scaling and accelerating. So really thinking about how we take the internal operations of city government, so an organization of 3,000 employees, 1,000 fleet vehicles and 300 facilities and really make them the most sustainable and high-performing from an energy and emission standpoint as possible. But it's also about thinking externally in terms of citywide policies around land use and buildings and the different incentives, structures that we have for infrastructure and development that we're taking note of in terms of modeling emissions reduction and climate mitigation efforts across the entire city. And that leads us to kind of one of the key things maybe to put the, you know, the bottom line up front for council in the legislative process is that there's a lot of things that we've started to identify through those, you know, three initial phases that will require legislative assistance in terms of kind of changing how we operate as a city to really face those issues of climate change from a mitigation standpoint or how we reduce emissions, but also starting to think about what we call adaptation. So understanding that we're in a changing climate, how do we think about the delivery of municipal services given the realities of more precipitation and changing heating and cooling patterns? So those are some critical things that we want you to think about and take into consideration as you hear some of our speakers today in terms of how do we make better and more strategic investments in our facilities, in our fleet, about thinking about how do we make Pittsburgh more walkable and bikeable and accessible through better land use and development? How do we encourage better building performance and design standards, not just in our buildings, but also through the development cycle around the city? It's also about how do we integrate natural systems into our decision-making? About a year ago, the city was designated as a biophilic city, which means that we're integrating nature into our policy and decision-making process. Also key things about improving residential waste collection and thinking locally about our decision-making, both in terms of waste systems, food, agriculture and energy. And most importantly, it's important that we think about how we appropriately capitalize the work that we need to do as a city to meet these climate action goals. So with that, just as kind of setting the table, what I want to do is just introduce a few of our friends here. Leading off with Sarah Jaeger, who's on our team in the Division of Sustainability and Resilience, who's going to give a little bit of an overview of kind of the work that we've done to date. Then followed up by Irene Nielsen from the National Resources Defense Council, who is our key partner in the American Cities Climate Challenge. Then Matt Youngclass from the Rocky Mountain Institute and then my colleague, Chris Hornstein from the Department of Public Works. And then Scott Bricker from the organization Bike Pittsburgh, who's going to talk about the role of bike ped mobility in terms of emissions reduction. So I'll yield the rest of my time to Sarah, I guess.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of slides to kind of talk through, again, where did we start? What are the goals we set? What are our baselines and benchmarks? And then knowing that the plan was adopted about a year ago at this point, what have we been able to accomplish and kind of check off through this past year and what is in the work that we hope to really be accomplishing over the next year or so? So just going back to the beginning, in 2017, the mayor did set our 2030 goals, both internally for city operations as well as for the city of Pittsburgh as a whole, to overall reduce 50% of our emissions by 2030 and then internally have that 100% renewable electricity, 100% fossil fuel-free fleet and divestment from fossil fuel companies. And then for the city as a whole, we have goals of 50% energy and water use reduction, 50% transportation emission reduction and a zero-waste goal. So we can see that in our last inventory in 2013, we were slightly above our baseline of 2003. We're currently in the process of updating this inventory to be able to have better current data. We're in the process of doing inventory for 2018 and then also setting up the process to be able to do an inventory annually. We really think that doing that annual inventory will help us track our progress since we are ramping up a lot of these activities and putting a lot more effort behind these activities. We want to be able to see that year-to-year progress in order to really know that we're reaching those 2030 goals. Lastly, just kind of up in the top right corner is our breakdown from that 2013 inventory. As we talk later about specific actions, a lot of it does focus on the buildings and the transportation because that's where about 99% of our emissions are coming from. So if we can really tackle that 17% that's related to transportation and the about 80 or so percent that's related to buildings, that gets us really great reductions.
So the 2030 goals, the first one is just city facilities and city kind of ownership, but the second set of goals is citywide?
So the top, kind of under the 2030 goals, those first three are just how do we improve our own operations? How do we set a good example by achieving those three goals? And then the three at the bottom of 50% energy and water use reduction, transportation emission reduction and the zero waste are for kind of the whole city, 55 square miles of the city of Pittsburgh. So looking at kind of the goals that we've set, the Climate Action Plan that was adopted last year and the progress that we've made, there are a number of things that we kind of have just checked off and have accomplished over about the past year, year and a half. Going through the six chapters of the Climate Action Plan, starting with energy, we've been able to enter into a partnership with the city of Aarhus in Denmark to really focus on district energy systems and looking at how we can localize our energy systems and improve efficiency across the distribution of energy. So that partnership was just signed recently and is underway and is going really well. And kind of along with that, we were able to enter into a partnership with Siemens through the 100 Resilient Cities Network and complete a city performance tool analysis. This analysis gave us the numbers kind of behind the actions that we have presented in the Climate Action Plan. Not only does it help us to prioritize technologies for their greenhouse gas emissions impacts, but we are also able to look at numbers like job creation, air quality benefits, overall economic benefits, cost-benefit analysis and really be able to get some of that data behind the actions that we've put forward to see what those impacts will be and help us prioritize where we select some of those actions and technologies. In the building sector, one of the biggest things that we see as a benefit is that we helped and kind of supported the adoption of updated building codes at the state level. In the past, we were kind of stuck a couple iterations behind which really hindered what we could do as far as energy efficiency or require as far as energy efficiency in our buildings. So updating the building codes at the state level was very beneficial. And then along with kind of having those new codes, we've also looked at how we can train people locally to improve efficiency. So one of them is G-Pro training, which looks directly at how we use what is currently in buildings and just make sure those systems are operating as highly as they can. So we were able to train a number of city staff as well as then staff who are operating and maintaining buildings throughout the city of Pittsburgh. So with a partnership with the Green Building Alliance, we were able to really train a lot of the cohort here within the city of Pittsburgh. Also with the Green Building Alliance, we have hosted a number of passive house trainings. So again, looking at how we have that workforce development locally of really ensuring that people have the skills and knowledge to be able to implement some of these high-efficiency upgrades that we're looking for. On the policy side, the county recently adopted CPACE, so Property Assess Clean Energy, which is a financing mechanism that allows alternative financing for energy efficiency in commercial buildings. So it can really help make energy efficiency more affordable when buildings are either being built or retrofitted. So this is a great tool that the county recently adopted and is going to be available for all commercial buildings within Allegheny County. On that kind of same buildings front, we, there's been some push around greening the multi-list service. And so how do we properly account for green buildings and allowing some of those traits like solar, like high-efficiency appliances to be included in sale postings for residential homes? And so really making sure that that benefit and that cost savings and that kind of overall economic benefit is being seen to buyers when they're trying to look for housing. The last one under buildings is our Energy Benchmarking Ordinance Report. We just recently released the first of the energy benchmarking reports. We looked at our city facilities and benchmarked how we're performing. We're in the process of also creating a similar report for all of the buildings that have complied with the Benchmarking Ordinance, which is all commercial buildings over 50,000 square feet. So this gives us a good picture of where we are and where we can really improve. There's some more later on about specifically that efficiency piece, but this benchmarking report gives us that starting point so we know where we're focusing. Within transportation, there's also been a lot of great work being done within Domi and with a number of other partners around kind of complete streets and improving bike and pedestrian networks and ensuring that there's options for mode shift and options beyond just single occupancy vehicles. We've also worked with our city fleet in order to convert, currently we have 19 electric vehicles, which is getting us towards our goals of that fossil fuel-free fleet. And then we've worked a lot with the Parking Authority as well on the Green Garage Initiative, which is looking to improve the efficiency of their garages, but then also in the public charging infrastructure. So encouraging people to utilize electric vehicles by having the infrastructure in place to allow them to charge their vehicles. Within waste, we've started, completed the roadmap to zero waste, which looks at how we really get to that zero-waste goal. And then have also partnered with a number of organizations to begin recycling bin distribution to help encourage residential recycling. Within food and agriculture, we've seen more than 100 lots be adopted through the Adopt a Lot Program and have developed the vacant lot toolkit that really helps people know what they are able to do with vacant lots and turn them into an asset for those communities. Grant mentioned earlier that we are a biophilic city and so we've kind of in that sequestration chapter really been able to see how our green spaces and our ecosystems play a role in the health of our city, but also in the climate action and the removal of carbon from our atmosphere. So we have a number of plans that have been completed, the Clean Green Plan, the Urban Tree Master Plan and the Greenways Plan. And then a huge piece of this is also the Hays Wood acquisition. It's a huge component in our ability to remove carbon from the atmosphere. So those are a number of things that we've kind of, as we look through what is laid out in the Climate Action Plan, have kind of completed and are done. These are kind of what's in the works. So those are things that have been completed over the past year or so since the plan was adopted, but we still have a number of things that are in the works and then what we hope to do in the future. Within energy specifically, we have a lot within this energy master plan, looking at how, again, internally we get to that 100% renewable goal. We have the Western Pennsylvania Energy Consortium, which the city runs and has about 35 different entities that are members. And we're in the process of changing how we procure our electricity in order to enable us to do grid-scale power purchase agreements. By the end of 2020, we believe that we'll be able to have some good grid-scale renewables being included into our portfolio of our energy procurement. This also enables us to do, utilize our facilities and land that we own and enables a couple of different mechanisms through which we can do onsite generation as well. Within the energy master plan, we also have recommendations that came out, recently came out of the EV Task Force, looking at what the city needs to do around zoning policy for, to encourage EVs and build out that infrastructure for electric vehicle charging. And then again, back to that kind of partnership with the city of Aarhus, we have a lot of work we're doing around district energy systems with PACT and then the system in the Hill District and the systems up in Oakland and how we can really set the direction for district energy in Pittsburgh. Another big success that we've seen and are continuing to move forward with is our collaboration with the Department of City Planning. Through their processes of the neighborhood plans, the institutional master plans and the performance reviews, we've been able to really instill a lot of the goals of the Climate Action Plan into these different processes. So whether it's seeing how that we can make more green spaces in neighborhoods or promote tree canopy cover in neighborhoods, or getting our institutional master plans to adopt similar goals of the Climate Action Plan and prioritize efficiency and renewable energy. With our performance reviews, we're working with the large building and development communities within Pittsburgh and seeing how, again, they can change the thinking a little bit to really prioritize this efficiency and make the best buildings possible and really align the development with our climate action goals. Similarly, we've been working with Public Works. Matt and Chris will talk more about this, but we have the Net Zero Energy Ordinance that was recently introduced and there's a lot of work being done around the facilities optimization. And then of course, kind of in the transportation side, we have the Bus Rapid Transit System and the Bike Plan, which both really get us towards those goals of reducing vehicle miles traveled and on-road emissions. So those are things that are currently in the works, currently moving forward and kind of our near-term goals. With our future plans, we're beginning to look kind of what's next. And this is really where that kind of citywide approach begins to happen. A lot of our work has been that getting our own operations order, how do we meet those internal goals? But looking outward, how do we better utilize land in order to promote mode shift and promote efficient buildings and promote location efficiency? How do we really get to that implementation of the roadmap to zero waste? And how do we integrate kind of the zoning and planning into all of these works, including the kind of parking master plan, EV charging master plan? And then of course, the, thank you, our streetlights upgrade. And that provides a huge, thank you, a huge opportunity for both cost savings and emissions reduction within the streetlight upgrade. So the last thing I just wanted to end with is kind of, we know what we have accomplished, what we have in the works and what our future plans is, plans are. And one thing that Grant mentioned is kind of the strength of the network that we've created, both locally within the city of Pittsburgh, but then also nationally and globally. And this is just one slide that does not, is not extensive of all of our partnerships, but Pittsburgh has been able to really take advantage of a lot of these partnerships, has made a lot of commitments. And we really see kind of these commitments and these external partnerships as being integral to our ability to move things forward and really see the successes that we have. And so I think, turn it over to Matt, who is from one of these kind of external partnerships with the Rocky Mountain Institute, to dive a little bit deeper into specifically the energy efficiency and buildings upgrade work.
Great. Thanks so much for that, Sarah. Yeah, just by way of brief introduction, Matt Youngclaus from Rocky Mountain Institute, a manager in our Efficient Buildings Program. I am not from Pittsburgh, I'm from Boulder, Colorado. But we've been working in Pittsburgh, actually, off and on for decades through the support of the Heinz Endowments, especially over the last five years, we've been involved in the Hazelwood Green Project. And then really deeply over the past year with the city specifically on this work around net zero energy with a laser focus on building efficiency. There are other parts of RMI working on the American Cities Climate Challenge with NRDC, Delivery Associates and those other players. But my sole focus has been on building energy efficiency to date. And I wanted to bring up a couple of things related to where we've been making really great progress with the city. You know, first of all, I just want to say how exciting it is to be here, be in this room and know that council is voting soon on the legislation related to net zero energy facilities for the city. I think that's a huge step forward, a big statement of intention and something that isn't really happening outside of Pittsburgh. To set that far of a standard for city facilities is really something above and beyond. And I think it sets the right tone to move from, and Sarah's goal is that upper quadrant, where we're talking about what the city needs to do, to set the intention for the private sector and for privately-owned buildings to achieve their climate goals as well. Because I don't think they can do it until the city leads by example. So I think it's great that we're taking this step now. And I think that there are a few other things that could really help to enable this type of change, to enable the city to go farther with what they have, to make the best use of its resources. And beyond that net zero legislation, allowing Chris to invest in net zero facilities, my job is to make Chris's job easier, is, you know, first a focus on lifecycle costs. So right now procurement code is written such that things need to be purchased on a lowest first cost. And that makes sense for some things that the city might procure, but on a building, it can really, you know, cripple our ability to go for net zero energy, to go to low-carbon goals. You know, if you had the option of buying a house that would cost you $200,000 but have $50,000 in repairs a few years down the line versus a $220,000 house that has all of the bells and whistles, performs well and is a safe and healthy building, you know, you would, you would want to go for that $220,000 option. Right now, that is not allowed by some of the city codes. So we'd really like to push that lowest lifecycle cost language as a potential option for future legislation. I think further, you know, we'd like to find ways to streamline procurement so that the Department of Public Works and others can, you know, leverage the staff and the budget that they have and also leverage, you know, the private sector to do a lot of the legwork that they're already familiar with, do things like streamlined construction management, which could allow one DPW staff to run a larger and more complex set of projects than they could without a streamlined construction management type of approach. I'd say that the last piece is probably obvious to all of us, but it's how do we pay for all of this? I think part of that is capitalizing the budget for the facilities that are coming up in the facilities plan that Chris's team and I are working to put together. What buildings do we tackle, in what order to reduce emissions as much as possible, as quickly as possible? So part of that is, you know, finding the space in the annual budget, knowing, again, getting back to the lifecycle piece, that it will pay for itself over time. And then the other piece is contemplating, you know, there are different ways of doing third-party financing that could take this off of the capital budget if the council decided that it didn't make sense to burden the capital budget with those expenses. And we're talking about that right now as a potential opportunity for buildings or streetlights or other kind of hot-button pieces that could really move the needle on carbon emissions. The last thing I'll note too is this approach, talking about not just, you know, what the upfront cost is, but how much money are you saving down the line, can really be valid for a lot of things outside of buildings. So I think there's a lot of potential for something like allowing purchase based on lowest lifecycle cost to benefit the city's fleet, to benefit lowest lifecycle cost to benefit the city's fleet, to benefit purchasing throughout all city departments, wherever there's an opportunity to save taxpayer money through a larger investment now that'll save for 10, 20, 50 years. It makes sense because, you know, I think we all expect that, you know, this building will be here, the city government will be here, you know, 50, 100, 200 years down the road. And it makes sense to invest in the buildings, you know, with that in mind. So, yeah, I'd just close by saying that I've been really inspired by our, you know, our conversations within the city, by seeing a lot of the buzz around this net-zero energy legislation that's going up for a vote. It's gotten a lot of really great international attention. You know, I've been really honored to work with the city of Pittsburgh for years, to have relationships with all these folks, and we're excited to see the progress as it continues. So, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. Thanks, Matt. I want to extend my thanks, too, to Grant. You know, I'm pretty relatively new to the city team and so he was kind of gracious enough to reach out to me and kind of bring me in the fold. And as soon as he and I talked, you know, it was pretty apparent from the data sets that I had that, you know, these types of investments would be like hugely important for the city in terms of the facilities. And then I'm also very appreciative for Matt and the Rocky Mountain Institute for bringing both the technical expertise, but the, the kind of willingness to accept the challenge, so to speak, that is sometimes facilities, maintenance and, and capital execution. I think one of the other things that, you know, I don't ever want us to lose sight of in this is that, you know, ultimately, these improvements, yes, we talk about them being cost-efficient and that's a savings and, and there's just a, there's a certain intelligence and just common sense to making a good rational decision. But this is also a lot about just improving the conditions of the facilities themselves for users, right? Like, this is about making a fire station better for firefighters so that they have better light quality, they have better air quality, they have a facility that works better for them and then they can service the public better. This is about making better facilities for our seniors that use our senior centers, for youth that use record senior centers. So these, this kind of layers in and is kind of part of a broader facilities maintenance strategy, but is absolutely a critical tool to help accomplishing that. You know, I, there, there's a lot of different ways that we can, I think, look to fund this. You know, money is always, you know, that, it's the lifeblood of municipal government in some way, right? Like, this is how we kind of make the engine go. And I think we've, we've both identified a series of strategies and different ways to execute projects that give us flexibility in terms of what our funding sources are, capabilities to execute. So it's not just always going to be, I don't want the public to leave here thinking that, oh, the city's going to just go in and changing a bunch of light bulbs, because it's not just about that. It's about packaging better, more energy-efficient heating. And in some cases, it's about completely reimagining a facility such that it's as energy-efficient as we, as possible while we're retaining important historic characteristics. So this is all achievable if we kind of collectively put our wheels together.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Irene Nielsen. I'm with the Natural Resources Defense Council. And today, I'm here to talk about the American Cities Climate Challenge. Pittsburgh, as you know, is one of the 25 winning cities of the American Cities Climate Challenge. From Honolulu to Boston, Seattle to St. Petersburg, really excellent peers. And Pittsburgh has maintained its leadership role within this challenge. As a winner, all 25 cities were accepted into a two-year accelerated program with powerful resources and access to cutting-edge support to help meet Pittsburgh's near-term carbon reduction goals. The challenge team includes national experts and partnering organizations such as World Resources Institute, RMI, Electrification Coalition, and the Institute for Market Transformation, to name a few. These resources also include a philanthropy-funded team member to facilitate the development and passage of high-impact policies, training for city staff and leadership to assist with the implementation of the proposed climate plans, as well as citizen engagement support to maximize community engagement. The challenge operates across all the cities in four main areas to reach the ambitious goals that collectively will uphold the Paris Climate Agreement goals in the absence of federal leadership. And broadly speaking, those include increasing renewable energy, decreasing building energy use, reducing vehicle miles traveled, and increasing no-emissions travel options like electric vehicles, bikes, pedestrian and other mobility options. But for Pittsburgh, there are six specific actions in these broad categories of areas. And each of these is a key component of the city's Climate Action Plan that supports progress towards the goal that Sarah walked through, around 100% renewable energy and 50% transportation emissions reductions. For clean energy, the city seeks to procure new local renewable energy. And this includes a goal of 1.5 megawatts of new renewable cited within the city, excuse me, or procured by the city by 2020. This includes on city property and assets such as the Second Avenue parking lot to produce clean energy to be used by city facilities. For building energy, the action includes strategic investment in high-efficiency buildings that will reduce power bills for building owners and save money year after year. For our city buildings, the strategy is to decarbonize the municipal buildings, implementing retrofits with high-impact energy efficiency strategies to significantly reduce energy bills. It's a demonstration of commitment to the Climate Action Plan and also smart investment by the city, as we've said, knowing the buildings will be used for decades to come. For commercial buildings, the city's program for benchmarking the performance of commercial buildings, with the goal of 32 million square feet of commercial buildings reporting, is an action that delivers value for private building owners to find opportunities and make investments to lower their energy costs. The city's also advancing the use of CPACE, as Sarah mentioned, around energy efficiency strategies for major building projects as well as existing that is expected to come online once the county program begins next year. These three strategies around building energy can achieve significant progress towards the city's climate goals while reducing money wasted on energy bills. In the transportation section, as we've discussed, the city's expanding biking and walking networks, including new bike facilities and interventions in over 50 crosswalks and intersections. And then on the electric vehicle side, as we've heard, the goals through 2020 include 30 electric vehicles for the fleet as well as 30 charging points. Each of the projects I spoke of are cornerstone climate actions that, once implemented, can create jobs, improve air quality, deliver cost savings and make essential progress in reducing greenhouse gas pollution. And each of these actions are also strategies Pittsburgh will need to scale up for the city to reach the climate action goals. This is really a crucial moment for the city to invest in these foundations, starting with the retrofits of the city's largest energy demands, which includes the building we're in today, the City-County Building, which is the single largest energy user, and the conversion, as we've, as we heard about today, of the, some 40,000 streetlights to LEDs that will return substantial annual savings in less than a decade. These investments by the city not only save money, they demonstrate leadership and invest in a stronger city and a brighter climate future. So I just want to say thank you. I'm very humbled and grateful to be working with the staff of the city of Pittsburgh at this important moment for the Climate Action Plan. Thank you again for having me speak. Thank you.
And thanks for having me. I'm Scott Bricker. I'm the Executive Director of Bike Pittsburgh. And for those of you who don't know, out in the public, we're a 3,500-member-strong bicycle and pedestrian advocacy organization that's trying to connect our city through non-motorized transportation, clean, efficient, safe transportation that's convenient for everybody. And I appreciate the opportunity to share this information with the public and with you. A lot of people, when they think about actions they might take for the environment or to reduce emissions, they think maybe exchanging old light bulbs for efficient LEDs or setting the temperature a little bit higher on their thermostat for, on their air conditioning on hot days like today. Buying new energy-efficient windows, paying a few dollars more for that new efficient refrigerator. And those are all very important things and we should all do them. But our biggest climate blind spot right now is how we move around. Transportation is now the largest source of U.S. greenhouse gas emissions, making up about 29% of our national total emissions. And unlike the energy sector, greenhouse gases from the transportation sector have increased every single year since 2012 and continue to go up. So what are the sources of these transportation emissions? Oil, mostly. Oil powers more than 93% of how we move around. And the biggest culprit is, is cars. Cars make up nearly 60% of our transportation emissions. When a gallon of gas is burned, it creates nearly 20 pounds of CO2. So next time any of us fill up our cars, and yes, I own a car, too, save 15 gallons, right? You should know that by the time we need to fill up again, we've each put about 300 pounds of CO2 into the atmosphere. But we all need to get around and we like to get around. So what should we do? Well, first, some facts. 23% of trips in Pittsburgh are under one mile. 17% of trips are between one and two miles and 11% are between two and three miles. That's approximately 50% of trips in Pittsburgh, three miles and less. These are relatively short distances that can be done without a car. But we need to acknowledge that placing the responsibility on the individual or family to reduce car use isn't fair or realistic without our government making that choice easy and making conditions safe and convenient. What's the number one reason people give for not biking and walking more? Cars. People are afraid of getting hit by them. The number two reason people don't walk and bike is also due to cars, but in a different way, because for decades, we've designed almost everything around them. Another fact that we have lost sight of is that the most efficient, least polluting, most affordable transportation is this: all of your daily needs within easy walking or biking distance. This should be front of mind as we plan the future of Pittsburgh and make investments in our streets and neighborhoods. For too long, we've made decisions for our neighborhoods and the city as a whole around the assumption that most people already own or should own a car. Too many things we need are simply not in close proximity to where we live, and if they are, we've created a culture through our investments that encourage even short trips to be made by car. Goals in the Climate Action Plan 3.0 call for increasing biking from 2.5% to 10% of commuting trips, increasing walking 10% to 15% of trips, doubling transit ridership while cutting in half single occupancy car trips. So now, what do we do to get there? We have to be bold. And I say the time for half-measures has passed. The city should be doing everything it can to discourage car use while investing massively in biking, walking and transit. Bike lanes need to be connected across the entire city and protected from cars. Transit needs to be given priority with its own lanes and signal priority. The city needs to rewrite our zoning code to eliminate parking minimums and to allow more housing, especially affordable housing near transit and jobs. We need to create car-free spaces for our residents. Besides the trail in parks and along our riverfronts and the occasional street that's been taken offline for reasons of landslides or weight restrictions, there isn't a single car-free space in Pittsburgh. The city should support things like open streets events. In 2015, we partnered with GASP, which is the Group Against Smog and Pollution, to look for air, to look at air quality during and after open streets in the Strip in Lawrenceville. Their monitors found that pollution levels were four times higher with cars than without. Not only that, but our survey of participants found that 40% are willing to bike or walk more in their everyday lives as a result of open streets. We can also set aside time to make certain streets into car-free shopping streets. Think Penn Avenue and the Strip from 16th to 24 on weekends without cars. We could make more plazas like Market Square downtown, but without cars. We need to end practices like free parking during holidays or even free parking after 6:00 PM. If there's high demand for on-street car parking, we should be charging for it. If anything should be free for holidays, it should be public transit. We need to get the pricing right for parking and put these dollars into a fund that pays for active transportation improvements. The city also has to acknowledge that there's a higher and better use for the vast amounts of space that on-street car storage is taking up and reallocate some of that space to safe, comfortable, connected and effective biking, walking and transit infrastructure. The result of taking action isn't simply the good feeling of doing our part to fight climate change. It also gives people more freedom to breathe clean air, to walk and bike safely in pleasant, quieter places. These investments are proven to reduce harmful crashes in our streets and proven to increase traffic at lo, at local businesses. And last but not least, it gives people the freedom to repurpose our resources that we are currently forced to spend on car ownership for other things and keep those dollars local. When we design completes and safe streets for all, it's good for families, the local economy, for our lungs, our physical health and safety, and for the climate. Thank you.
Thank you all. Wow, that is a lot of information and there's a, there's a lot that we are doing. Clearly, there's a lot that we still need to do. Before I ask my questions and make some, some kind of final remarks and, and comments, I wanted to turn it over to Councilwoman Gross to see if she had any questions. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. I think, I think we probably all have way more questions than we have time for. This feels like it needs to be five post-adjourners, in a way. And I feel like I said the same thing last year when we first passed it. So we have, I think, really exciting opportunities in all of these categories: waste, buildings and facilities, transportation and kind of greening, all of our, our city spaces. We didn't, we talked, we touched a little bit, I think, early on about the kind of zero-waste and soil capacity for carbon sequestration. And I feel like we have really almost no obstacles there. We really can do that. We have, we have 10% of our properties alone that the city has the deed to in treasurer sale, right? There's 140,000 some properties, and I know I've talked with Director Irvin about this in the past, and 140,000 some private property parcels, and the city has 10% of them because they've been abandoned. So on top of parks and on top of street right-of-way and on top of all the other public spaces and public 300 facilities that the city owns, there's that additional space. And we've talked about what a kind of green print overlay would look like there so that we can do things like stormwater capture and greening and soil improvement. And I remember last year, my being really excited about the fact that composting and improving our terrible urban soils actually dramatically improves its carbon capture capacity. And then sometime later, and last fall, there was a whole conference on soil at FIPS and I went to like half a day of it, which is all I could squeeze in, but it was really exciting. And it was tough. There were lots of local people there. And so we have the, we have the local nonprofits and for-profit people who are doing composting. I have constituents in Highland Park who, even though they have a yard, kind of couldn't figure out how to get their compost going in their backyard. I've been composting for like 25 years. I have like double composters going at any one time. And so there's a service that they pay for that comes and gets their kitchen scraps from their house every Saturday and takes it off someplace else and composts it. And they pay them to do it. So we know that there's an appetite among our constituency. And I have a small bill that I was working on last December that didn't make it through the budgeting process to do some kind of piloting. And I've talked to Councilwoman Strasburger about this. So I commit to moving that forward so we can pilot something. We can find, I think it was $30,000, we can find $30,000. I don't care if it's at a church, if it's at a public park, if it's at a farmer's market, where we can partner with somebody to try to allow our citizens to do this, much like we've done the Christmas tree recycling, right? Which is basically just composting. So we know people are out there trying to do it on their own and it's really our job to help them. If it's in our goals and people are doing it, you know, by hook or crook, I think we can, I think we can add a little capacity there. That's, that's what we're here for, adding capacity. And then I'm very excited also about our land use opportunities among, aside from the fact that we have lots of space that we're not managing, we're even frustrated because we have to try to mow the grass on them, we're not keeping them up. It's a, like, we're adding to blight in neighborhoods because we're being bad land stewards of the lands that we have. We have this opportunity to make choices about parking, right? And we have not been good at that. I think that in my district alone, we've induced thousands of cars where they weren't before because of parking requirements. And it's really something we've made a couple of steps with the riverfront overlay, but we can go a lot farther. We know we can. And we need to find the will to do that. We need to find the votes to do that. Because I'm not sure if there are the votes here on this council, but I would love to see us work together to do that as well. We really need to take it a lot more seriously and sooner, and not just intend to do it, but do it. And getting the pricing right for parking, I know I'm kind of touching mostly on the things that we discussed last, but I, I think that with the amount of development pressure, that these things can't wait. Five years ago, we didn't have this development pressure. And five years ago, nobody predicted that there would be something like 4,000 more parking spaces built in the Strip District alone, right? So we, it's, it's, we can't delay. So we, it's, it's, we can't delay getting that right. And council passed, I think it was even in my first year or two, gave the ability to the Parking Authority to do dynamic pricing, and we've yet to really see a robust rollout. And it's needed. It's needed for not just a fair revenue capture, it's needed because people are literally parking and riding from as far away as Bloomfield on, in front of us, you know, a city business, in a business district, to then catch mass transit and come downtown, right? Because it's like twenty-five cents, right? So, I mean, I forget, twenty-five cents for twelve minutes there, something like that. They can literally, it's worth their money to park on streets. And where there aren't meters, there are lots of places that we both know in business districts especially that aren't yet metered, that we need to really encourage, or maybe even force Parking Authority to go ahead and meet them. I know, Councilwoman, you're on the board, right?
Hi, I am.
And there are some places that have been probably in the queue for parking meters for a couple of years, and, you know, we need to see those rollouts. So I think that is definitely a way, but I want to touch on one more thing that is also related to parking and land use and being able to switch modes, which is that in our zoning, right, it's still based on that like nineteen-fifties model, still. And even though we do a little better by having these complicated use tables that like, there's like a giant section of town that's just all residentially zoned. And that's not the way it was built, not in my district, which are all mostly pre-car or trolley car districts, where there's a funky little corner store behind my very residential street in Highland Park that I think is still grandfathered, but in a lot of places that's reverted to it, back to a residential, where you see, you can drive, you just, anywhere you go in Pittsburgh, walk, not drive, and see those corner stores, right? We can get those back. So what you don't have, the way we're currently permitting and zoning, is the clear path to having all of the things that you need on a daily basis in a non-car radius from your house. How do you get your kid to childcare? How do you get your eggs and toilet paper and milk? How do you get to, even to a bus stop, sometimes they're not really very close? And sure, there are parts of the city that were built out after nineteen-fifty that are built in a much different scale, and those will probably be a more difficult challenge. But it's almost inexcusable for a lot of the city that was built before cars, people had cars, that we've carified them and codified that, so that it's, it's very difficult to get around and almost, and almost illegal to get around. And so when you, a few years ago, I had the fortune to visit Copenhagen by tagging along with my husband when he had a conference, and so it was like, you know, hotel room, he was going anyway, and what I noticed was that everything repeated. Actually, it was, it was, it was not Copenhagen, it was Bordeaux, it was in Bordeaux, it was years before that, so it was a number of years ago. I took a very long walk, and I really noticed that every kind of business repeated in my walk. So again, the childcare, the funky little takeout patisserie place, the funky little, like, for somewhere they had like utensil stores that were all just like knives and utensils, like tiny, tiny shops, but then I saw like three of them in a very long walk. So every single little neighborhood had its own little, like a hardware store or a different kind of, you know, a theater or something like that. So they each had on a very twenty-minute repeat. We don't have that. And I think we can get there, again, more easily in some neighborhoods than others, so that you can lit, you, you're not forced into a car or even into public transit. So let's do that. Let's do that, too. I know, we've, we've already had really great presentations, and again, there's a lot to dig into, and I think, you know, I'm very eager to work on, on any of these issues, and thank you for, for having the position, Councilwoman.
Thank you for your comments. I wanted to give speakers the opportunity to respond if there's anything they heard and really wanted to add to anything, not, not to put anyone on the spot, but opportunity. All good? Okay.
Just wanted to throw one quick idea, and that relates to your comments as well as the last presentation, that I've heard of some cities moving their zoning instead of parking minimums to parking maximums, which I think, I'm sure that you're well aware of and spoken about quite a bit, but I think that's just such a smart way to do it because it's causing you to design for these alternative forms of transit, but otherwise, really appreciated your comments.
Yeah, it's definitely something that we're talking about, and I think there's, there's more appetite some places physically in the city than others, right, where the constituents are ready, and other places where the constituents are not, and similarly among council members. So it's definitely something that I'm eager to start strategizing about. Thank you.
Thank you all. So I'll start with a couple of questions, and I think the big one in my mind is that we have really ambitious goals, whether it's city facilities and the city, capitalized city of Pittsburgh, or the city as a whole, that, you know, the whole geographic area. They're, they're pretty ambitious goals, twenty-thirty goals, which is really right around the corner, twenty-fifty goals, and then I'm sure, and future iterations of the plan, there'll be goals beyond that. So I guess my question is for anyone to answer, and probably Grant and Sarah, but others as well, how are we, year by year, tracking, benchmarking, what metrics are we using and methods are we using to track that? And how will the public be able to access and know, access and information and know what those kind of benchmarks are and whether we're on track to hit the goals? Everything from, you know, the energy piece, which is really, I think, a lot of what we've talked about in transportation, but also the, the waste and land use goals as well.
You may start, and then you can get to the details.
Yeah, so, so one of the things, when we talked about test refinement and project application, you know, data is the foundation of all the decisions that we make. So really creating good decision support tools is why we work with groups like Rocky Mountain Institute, the National Resources Defense Council, to start to put those systems in place so folks like myself and Chris have the data and, you know, to kind of work with in order to make really smart strategic decisions. A couple frameworks that we use that everybody should know that is widely available in terms of information, really kind of plays on, you know, the slide, the last slide that Sarah presents, is, one that I would start with is the Carbon Disclosure Project. So we report to an international consortium of cities and corporations that measure their carbon emissions, and that goes into a lot of work that Sarah does in terms of the carbon emissions inventory, or GHG inventory, that we take as a city, and that serves as a foundation. Another key tool that we work with is an organization called the American Council for Energy Efficient Economies, which is a mouthful, I know, but AC-E-E-E measures the performance of the top cities in the U.S. in terms of energy efficiency performance. So those kind of data sets that we start to pull together as our team become publicly available for anybody who wants to see them. Another kind of key tool is the Global Covenant for Mayors for Climate and Energy, which the mayor's on the Board of Directors on, has started to pull together all of those reporting platforms. So both at kind of the granular data as well as kind of the multinational level, we're able to present that information. Another key tool that we'll have through the American Cities Climate Challenge is a reporting dashboard that we're working on that takes each step-by-step project and activity that we're developing and shows the emissions impact. So, you know, we had a slide deck for a presentation earlier this morning, which shows to the building level the potential emissions reduction. So we have that information available. And then the final thing that I would say is, another great example is the Energy Benchmarking and Transparency Ordinance that council passed, that our colleague Flor Marion has copies of in the back there, that basically shows not just for city facilities, but also for the largest buildings across the city of Pittsburgh, so buildings fifty-five thousand square feet and above, we now have records of their energy consumption. Same goes in the transportation sector as well with regards to work that DOMI and the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission collects data on. So we're getting better at collecting data, but also starting to work to improve on how we present that information and make it available.
And that's, going to the greenhouse gas emission inventory specifically, I think with that hope of doing one annually, it would be a way to, again, calculate our emissions, track that annual progress, knowing that twenty-thirty is right around the corner, doing a five-year inventory, as we've done in the past, doesn't really give us enough time to adjust if we need to. So with the hope of doing that annual inventory is, one, the transparency of where are we? Are we achieving our goals? Are we on track? But then also allows us to kind of combine all of those different sources of data, reporting mechanisms that Grant mentioned, into one concise report that is digestible, available to the public, and really outlines the specifics of, these are our total emissions, these are the total reductions we've seen, what are the steps we've taken, what have we done to achieve those reductions? So by doing that annual inventory, we really see that as the mechanism for reporting all this data more locally and making it more publicly available.
That's great to hear, because I do think the most helpful tool will be an easily digestible report that then you can dig into, but actually has the, you know, here's what we committed to, here are the projects that we've completed, and here are the reductions versus our goal. We're on track, we're not on track, we're a little bit short, we're a little bit, you know, ahead of the curve. So that's great to hear. And do you expect that to be ready for the public consumption, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one? Where are you, do you think, versus?
Early twenty-twenty, I think, is when we would have the two thousand and eighteen one finalized, which would, again, be that updated inventory as well as kind of a progress report on the Climate Action Plan as a whole. In the process of doing this two thousand and eighteen inventory, we're also trying to set up processes of data sharing with the organizations that we utilize for that data, to streamline it kind of within their operations, that they just know each year we're going to be asking for this data set, so they can kind of begin to operationalize that ask, that it's just an easy data sharing every year, that we can do that pretty quickly.
One other thing that I'd add to that, too, is what we've seen with a lot of the partners that we've convened, and I'd point to directly universities as being really great examples of how we are working through the planning department as universities, for instance, come in for their ten-year institutional master plans, which is a requirement of code to also incorporate and adopt emissions reductions targets. So the University of Pittsburgh is a really great example of this right now, where they're going through that IMP process, but also incorporating their institutional master plan also with their sustainability objectives. So they, too, have a fifty percent emissions reduction target, and as one of the largest, you know, building footprints in the city, it's great to have them adopt these targets as well. So as you start to see Carnegie Mellon, Duquesne, University of Chatham, you know, as others come in, that starts to segment out large portions of the city that are also putting their ore in the water and rowing in the same direction.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you brought that up, because that segues into another point that I wanted to just mention, not really a question, but I think that the, it's a really important tool that we have, these institutional master plans, one, for universities, but also for hospitals, UPMC, and any other hospitals and networks that are out there that are bound to this process, must go through institutional master planning processes that, and if they can or are somehow bound to the same goals, that's a huge amount of land that, that we can then, and a huge amount of, you know, kind of building space that we can have some sort of shared goals around. But also, I'm heartened by the, the point that you made around the neighborhood master planning process, where now the city planning, our city planning department has a goal of having neighborhood plans in all ninety neighborhoods at some point, taking it, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood. So it will be a slow process, but integrating sustainability goals, climate action goals around building efficiency, transportation, land use, and codifying it as part of those enacted plans that then citizens, where citizens have a voice as part of the process, right? They are able to point back to the agreed-upon master plan and say, you know, I realize that this is a private development on a private piece of property, but you must adhere to this plan, and that's where we have some control over that process. So great that there's some sustainability goals in there as well.
Yeah, and, you know, one of the, I think the great kind of strides that we make, or a great example of a stride that we've made is, you take that example you provide about neighborhood planning, so in the Uptown Neighborhood and their development of the Uptown Eco-Innovation District project has provided that type of framework, right? Where we're thinking about these climate goals and the application of a community development, community planning process. How that starts to play out is, a couple months ago, we worked with UPMC and the Vision Center, so kind of a high-profile project, where their initial proposed building was a nice-looking building, but we asked the question, how does it perform? And collectively, we worked with the team at UPMC to reduce the energy use intensity of that building by fifty percent. So EUI is kind of one of those key metrics and targets that we utilize in the building space, but that emission, that shows the ability for them to reduce their emissions, but also save exponentially over the life cycle of that building, to Matt's point, you know. So, you know, we asked them, you know, how long are you guys going to be here? And they're like, well, you know, fifty years. You know, and that changed kind of their perception with regards to the mechanical systems, to the insulation, to the glazing, to the energy systems of that facility, but ultimately, not only are they the net beneficiary, but the community is as well.
Exactly, exactly. That's exactly right, and I think it's also an important conversation, and I'm glad that we're having these conversations or allowing, or really ensuring that our boards, authorities, and commissions that we work with are also adhering to these goals as well. I mean, we think, as a member of the Parking Authority, parking garages around for, say, fifty years, ensuring that those are maximizing efficiency and the best available technology for charging stations and et cetera, et cetera, I could go on and on. Another question, a very specific question I have from Matt, you mentioned third-party partnerships when it comes to money for budget, budget for building emissions reductions or for really the life cycle of, considering the life cycle of a project for, for anything, for fleets, et cetera. Are there examples that you can provide of those sort of third-party partnerships and what that, what that means?
Yeah, definitely, and I, I think that, you know, there are kind of two separate pieces. I think on the life cycle cost piece, a lot of that, you know, can be done through Pittsburgh's own operating budget, but when that is a constraint, there's a mechanism enabled at the state level called the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act, or what people refer to as GESA, G-E-S-A. And this is centered mostly around buildings, but I believe it could also be extended to the streetlights as a way to have basically a third-party energy services company that comes in, develops the project. There is still a competitive bid, but it's done with a smaller group of pre-qualified energy services companies that have gone through a statewide process. Legally, it should be enabled in all municipalities across Pennsylvania based on this statewide program, and they do the, you know, the design, the construction, and the third-party financing. So that, basically, if you, you look at the city's capital stack for, or their operating budget stack, rather, for a specific building, say they're spending, you know, a hundred dollars on utilities for a building, they're looking at a fifty percent energy cost savings through this project. The energy services company, for the first ten or twenty years, they might take forty-nine dollars from that operating budget stack each year and leave the city with one dollar of savings, and then the other fifty dollars would be exactly what the city's typically paying already. So they would pay a good deal toward the financing cost, still save a small amount of money, and have some of that budget remain the same, you know, the fifty percent that has not been saved. And then after that project's over, the city saves that full fifty, fifty dollars out of the hundred-dollar stack each year. So it's a way to get the investment off of Pittsburgh's capital budget sheet, essentially, and you're paying for the service of energy efficiency over whatever the contract term is that's agreed to with the energy service company. There are business models that do that with fleet as well, because with fleet, you have the same type of thing, where you're saving more money over the long term, but you might be spending a ten or twenty percent premium to get an electric vehicle upfront. I don't know whether or not that's allowable under Pennsylvania GESA, but it would be worth looking into. I know that most of the use cases are with buildings and things like streetlights, direct grid energy consumption on, you know, municipally-owned property, but I do know that nationally, this model has been used for vehicles, and there are probably ways that the city could use that as well.
So one challenge of communication around climate change, global warming, whatever you want to call it, you want to call it, is that this perception that it's far away and far in the future. And now, I think many of us are starting to recognize that it's, that's not the case. I think many more people than, than ever before are seeing the effects. I mean, the amount that we had to divert from our own budget, our own mobility and infrastructure and public works budget to deal with landslides alone was more than ever before, it was unprecedented. The number of people who are experiencing more basement flooding, sewage backups because of unprecedented rainstorms, 300-year storms, which we need to change the name of that because it's very confusing, because it's actually happening much more frequently than 300 years, and people don't quite understand what that means anymore. You know, we're seeing the effects of climate change right before us, and it's causing damage to public property and private property. And so it's a challenge, it's an opportunity in a lot of ways, but when we talk about adaptation, I guess my question is, how are we thinking about it so that we are knowing that at the very least, around whether it's this, these neighborhood plans, or whether it's decisions around city-owned facilities or city-owned properties, that we're not, that we're taking that into account, so we're not putting additional money or additional retrofits or renovation dollars into, say, a building that is in the path of a possible landslide, just as one example, or is going to be affected by climate change in some other way. How are we thinking about adaptation in that way as well?
I mean, one of, one of the things that we presented for this year's budget, and I'm not sure if it's in there or not, but is the idea of developing an adaptation evaluation for city operations. The reason being is what you see is that a lot of the work that we do, particularly in the local government's sector, is exposed to the risks that you lay out. So whether it's having to provide an out, capital outlay to clean up landslides, or to, you know, basically put in new systems into a facility because of extreme heating and cooling cycles and, you know, different impacts on those systems, what that does is it basically prevents us from doing the things that we need to do, right? So if you have to divert money to clean up landslides, that's $10 to $15 million that are not going to fixing facilities or paving roads and streets. And as these cycles, as you, as you implicate kind of are accelerating, we'll have to expose ourselves to more and more risk of diverting monies.
Now, well, there are sewers that we now are located in the PWSA system that are in unstable soils. So USGS has already mapped out the soil type for every square foot of the city, and so we know which of them are more susceptible to this kind of increased water, right? And so we've had hillsides collapse under sewers, and it's cost us millions of dollars under our budget as well. So it's, you know, very possible, I would think, to share information, right? I mean, we've been working on that one of the South Hills that I'm sure you're familiar with, like we had, I think it's around Grayson and the South Hills, one of the streets that were just, I mean, the hillside fell away, right, under a major sewer for part of a neighborhood. So we had to not just, you can't just rebuild it there, we had to figure out a new place to put a sewer line, public sewer for part of a neighborhood.
And again, it's money that could be spent on green infrastructure and actually getting to this issue and coming up with solutions, but was diverted to, to deal with adaptation.
I do have to leave it a minute, would you mind if I jump in before your closing remarks? I wanted to push back a little bit on the design-build description. Design-build has been used for many decades for massive capital projects. It's different for it to be used in something there, and I can't actually imagine waiting 10 years for the city to see the advantage, revenue advantage on streetlights. I mean, that's, that's kind of an inordinate amount of time to wait, right? And so I'm not, I would take some convincing to see that as the appropriate use for design build, which has been used for things like creating a power plant to, you know, power half of a small nation, right? That's the kind of huge capital outlay that, you know, a nation that couldn't afford to do their own massive electrical plant would be using with the private sector, so that the, the private sector partner is not just designing and building it and financing it, they're owning it for 10 years, and at the end of that revenue share, then they give it back so that the nation then owns that power plant. And so what your, what cities, I assume you're describing are doing for streetlights is that they're, they're not owning those streetlights for that 10-year, that contract. The person who built it owns it until the end, until they've recovered their, their revenue, and then they're handing over the ownership back to the city.
So there, there are a few different ways to do it. What I'm proposing, or not what I'm proposing, but what the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act would allow, is, I guess technically, they would, they would have a, an ownership of that, the retrofit equipment that goes into place, but they don't completely own the property or the fixture if they were to retrofit a building. You know, technically, I think that the, the bank that would be doing the private financing would own the equipment, but they wouldn't own the buildings for that period of time.
Yeah, so it would still be something that we want to look at carefully. I mean, I think that our Donald Cohen expert who came in last year had a lot to say about, that is on the safe end of his spectrum, design, build, finance, operate, and maintain, and it's usually the other end of the spectrum that we're concerned about, the operating, maintain lease agreements, like we only had with the PWSA water system that went so badly. But, yeah, so.
I think that's a great point, and I think, I think that, I bring that up as an option if the city is not able to provide the capital budget to do something like the streetlights, because right now, the streetlights are, you know, a really.
They're not great. I have a terrible one, I have to say, right behind my house, it's just terrible, it's right, it's blasting, and if you can't be in my backyard without, I almost like want to plant a tree to block it out.
Yeah, they're, they're just, there's such a high percentage of the carbon emissions of the city.
Yes.
That it's one of those things that.
Totally fair.
You know, needs to happen, and I'm agnostic to how it's paid for, I'm just providing options. I think the other piece is, you know, the, something like GESA is used at the federal level to improve the efficiency of their buildings, and it's something that the General Services Administration has been using to achieve.
I do think this, this, changing our contracting and procurement around to allow these kinds of things where they deserved, I think, is something that we'd be open to discussing in, in different ways. And when we're looking at it with our own, the water plant, it's a massive capital outlay for PWSA to, to, you know, have the water, and if we weren't forced to take, you know, it into a series of contracts that all have to go to, as you say, not for the, the longevity of the thing, but the upfront lowest bidder is, is definitely puts a, when you're building out, it's not a maintenance contract. Those, those kinds of restrictions are built really well for maintenance contracts, but when you're building a 100-year piece of infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not what that's designed for.
Yeah, and I, I think that the best possible outcome would be the city could purchase things based on lowest life cycle cost, and the city could pay for it out of the capital budget. That would be home run, you know, when the city sees all of those savings. The third-party financing is just a way not to rescind ownership of any assets that the city owns currently, a way to get the, the funding off of the, the balance sheet if that capital budget's not available.
Off booking doesn't always go well, but, yeah.
I understand, yeah.
Thank you, I've got to run. Thank you all for coming in, it's wonderful.
Grant, was there any further comment that you had on adaptation? I didn't know if there was additional.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, in my opening remarks, I mentioned how, you know, since we started the Climate Action Plan 3.0, the world has even changed, right? And this is kind of one of our calls, is to look at the development of adaptation planning, because we are going to have to think about how we operate in this new paradigm, you know? So it's no longer going to be business as usual in terms of heating and cooling cycles, or in terms of understanding how we manage and live with water. Councilwoman Gross mentioned green infrastructure. You know, we're in the process of developing, you know, our responses to the Clean Water Act consent decree, and this is some of the key research that we're using from the Rand Corporation in terms of the increases in precipitation, are calling for the increases in the utilization of green and natural infrastructure in order to kind of bolster and protect, basically protect ourselves from these increases in precipitation. Same thing that we need to see, though, is that cross-sector, and we're seeing it in a lot of our watershed work, the cross-sector collaboration between departments, between other government agencies, whether it be PennDOT or the Army Corps, and really starting to accelerate that work so that we can leverage everybody's capacity is going to be the key to addressing some of these challenges.
My last question is something that I, I assume and hope is woven throughout our climate action plan, but wanted to give those who have knowledge on this the opportunity to respond, but it's about equity. I mean, there's the perception that a lot of environmental issues, climate change, one of them, is for those who have the financial means to sort of tackle it, and I want to know how we're thinking about equity when we think about all aspects of the, the climate action plan.
Yeah, you know, one of the things that, you know, we're part of a lot of these networks of cities that are working on the issues of climate change, and, you know, one of the things that has become critically clear in this is that climate change and equity are the challenge, the, probably the paramount challenges that cities around the world are facing today, not just Pittsburgh. And the fact that they oftentimes see themselves in isolation does each issue a disservice. And in fact, what we've seen in a lot of our work is that there is an, an extreme, almost integration between the challenges of equity and the challenges of climate. A really good example of that is, you know, in conversations with members of the Gender Equity Commission, who just recently released their report on the impacts that they've seen in terms of gender equity across, systemic gender equity challenges across the city. And if you look at any issues that we've talked about here today, from the lens of a mother who is facing the, a transportation challenge, let's say, that is exacerbated tenfold in terms of the challenge that she has maybe to get a kid to daycare because of some of the things that Scott laid out. If you look at the issue of residential energy efficiency, one of the biggest challenges that we have had a tough time tackling, to be frank, has been the issues of what's called energy burden, or fuel or poverty. So if you're a child that has asthma, that is in a house that is older than 60 years old and doesn't have proper insulation, it's not just about the challenges of being able to afford a utility bill because you have an old leaky house that hasn't been updated since the early 1980s, maybe. It also exacerbates the health challenge of asthma or other cardiopulmonary diseases. So we need to start to think about these issues in a very integrated way because they are not isolated. The issues of energy efficiency, as Chris said about, you know, it's not just about saving a dollar, reducing carbon emissions, but it's also about providing clean, healthy working spaces for, you know, city employees or healthy active living centers for our residents. You know, so if you think about a healthy, active living center and the great activities that go on there for some of our most vulnerable residents, our seniors, how do we make sure that we have good, healthy, clean spaces? So upgrading and investing in those facilities is, yes, it's about energy efficiency, yes, it's about carbon emissions reductions, but it's also about making high-quality spaces for, for our seniors to enjoy, and the same can be said about our youth. So we need to think about these issues in an integrated way because basically, they march together in terms of their solutions.
And I have a point in terms of equity and transportation, and I would argue that the current system we have is, is inequitable. We've invested pretty much solely in car transportation for 70-plus years in this country. We've put all the burdens on how we move around, on the individual. We've, we've moved, you know, people who are less fortunate to hilltops and run infrequent transit service to them. We have not concentrated affordable housing in walkable, walkable communities with frequent bus service. These are issues that we actually have an opportunity, a huge opportunity to address with climate change and where our investments are going. So I, I would say that for the better part of the 20th century and first part of the 21st century, we've still been doing business as usual in terms of really putting the burdens on, on the individual and people, to how they get around, and saying, you have to own a car. Cars are expensive. Not everyone can own a car. In fact, in our city, 25% to 30% of households don't even have access to a car. So we can't say then, turn around and say, oh, sorry, you can't access life, you should own a car, you can't afford a car. So how do we, how do we restructure our investments? How do we, like I said in my, in my talk, in my presentation, how do we put it front of mind in every decision we're making? Like, how do we, okay, we're, we are building, we're building housing here. Okay, is this housing served by public transit? Is it connected safely with, with everything you need in, in your daily life, almost? How do we, how do we start to rethink those, all of those different decisions that we make in terms of how we get around in the city?
Any other points or comments for the good of the order?
I'd just like to add to that, that the equity question, just to really support what Grant said, is really central to a lot of the Climate City Challenge work, and that it really does align well across the board when you think about the emerging practices that will be fundamental to substantial greenhouse gas reduction. The equity question has to be part of the answer, and so things like, as Scott mentioned, prioritizing bus lanes can be a very equitable strategy if it, it helps those who use transit get to where they're going quicker, as long as it's cited in a way that, that really is serving underserved populations. Things like the, the expansion of electric vehicles also is one of the priorities around, you know, really making sure that equity is baked into this new market transformation strategy. So I just wanted to mention that that is something that across the peer cities within the challenge is really very important, and there's some excellent peer learning and exchange that we can offer there.
Great to hear, and I, you know, as a council member, I'm constantly looking to other cities because the hive mind is better than just the single mind, right? So, I mean, that is, that's true for council members as well, and I look forward to hearing about what you've learned, you collectively have learned, and others at the city have learned from other cities, and what's working and what's not, and what we can apply here. So that's great to hear. Well, if there are no final, if there are no other comments or questions, I'll just close by, by acknowledging that we have, we have an enormous challenge in this world. We are, I feel like I'm, I see a push notification from, you know, X, Y, or Z publication about a new IPCC report or a new UN climate report that is warning of dire consequences and the point of no return coming faster than we ever thought. And it's, the, the lack of action that we're seeing, not to get too political, but the lack of action we're seeing at the federal level on the United States, from the United States, can be disheartening. And I know for our, the youth that are protesting and marching in our streets and are really leading the way on this in many ways, it can feel disheartening, but that is where cities come into play. Cities are taking the lead on this, cities are, are almost the grassroots version of, of action on climate change from a more institutional perspective, because that is where we're actually seeing change as evidence from those who are here representing kind of municipal answers to this question. So I am heartened by what I hear today. I almost want to have a post-agenda on the Climate Action Plan on an annual basis so that we can continue to hear about what kind of progress we're making, because so much of what we're doing right now is focusing on what we as a city can do with our own city, city facilities and fleets, and that's almost the low-hanging fruit. Though it's costly, it's, we can implement it, we have control over it. What we have less control over is what happens out in the communities, right? And to some degree, so I'd love to, you know, continue to have this conversation almost on an annual basis, so we as council members can continue to hear about what the progress is, is being made, and, and get to the point where we're then having the conversation about what can we do to encourage, maybe not mandate, but encourage change on all these fronts in the entire city, you know, when it comes to consumers and homeowners and businesses and major, major energy consumers, energy-consuming customers. So with that, unless there's anything else that anyone would like to add, I want to.
I would just echo those comments. I mean, I, I think, you know, you've seen a lot of the activism in recent weeks from the youth, and, you know, it, it's both encouraging to see their engagement, but also it is daunting to understand the challenge that we're up against in terms of how we procure things, how we make the day-to-day decisions as a, as a unit of government, but also how we influence those decisions of our residents, as you kind of allude to. And I would just underscore your point that cities can do a lot, whether it's with the policy levers that we have in terms of land use and transportation, or the budget decisions that we make. that we make, that will make a significant impact in terms of both improving the livability of our cities, from a health and wellness and equitable standpoint, but also in terms of how we're making a better future for our residents, and the, frankly, the generations that aren't here, the ones that are yet to come, and how do we leave, you know, a better community for the future, is really kind of the decisions that we're talking about here today.
Said it better myself. Thank you. Thank you all for being here, appreciate your time, I appreciate you candidly answering some tough questions and for working on this issue, and I look forward to partnering with all of you into the future.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
With that, like, post-agenda is adjourned.